...with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04. This Board is authorized to meet electronically, so please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, this is to confirm that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. The ZBA is utilizing a telephone conference line for this electronic meeting. The public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, to participate in the meeting through dialing (603) 766-5646. Again, that's (603) 766-5646, and using the participant code (785645), followed by the pound sign. The zoning board is, or the town has provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. The town previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using the available telephone number with the posted agenda. They're providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem with telephone access, please call (603) 660-50000. Again, that is (603) 660-5000. And adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. We will adjourn the meeting and have it scheduled at the next meeting, reschedule it at that time. All votes that are taken during this meeting are going to be done by roll call vote, and as we take, as the board introduces themselves, they will, well, everybody's here. We have a board of only three, and we'll discuss that in just a minute. For the moment, if you would join me and, in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the other business. The Goffstown Zoning Board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members, but it has no alternates. So if anyone is interested in serving on the ZBA, please contact Nancy Larson in Town Hall for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting, and we most often tend to follow the items in order, but as Chair, I do have the option of varying from that order now and again. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from the applicants, the abutters, and affected parties, and to ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed, and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You're welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Nancy Larson at Town Hall to get results. And this is where I would like every applicant to pay attention and really consider. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. Tonight, we only have three members. Two other regular members are absent for one reason or another. So each applicant, if your application is going to prevail, it will need all three members to vote in favor. For an application to be denied, we would need all three members to vote in favor of that motion if it were to, if that were the case. And you have the option of having no, no hearing tonight and rescheduling it to next month if you would prefer. Let's see. If you're aggrieved by the decision the ZBA makes tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within 30 days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was unlawful or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. And with that, I'm going to ask the board to introduce themselves, and we're going to start with Nancy, please.
Nancy Larson, zoning code enforcement officer. Allen?
Allen Yeaton, member.
Denise Langley, member.
And I'm Gail Abrek, Chairman. And as we go into our applications, I am going to stray from the order first, from the order that's on the agenda, and we are going to take the Jason and Aspasia Cody application first. They were here last month, and after they were sent home, there was a concern regarding the vote. The vote was to approve, but it failed, and therefore, we didn't actually have any, any vote. So we have to, we are going to reopen the public hearing and go from there.
Chair?
Yes.
The letter that Nancy sent out on the 7th of August says we are not reopening the public hearing.
Does it? That's not my decision. And at that time, the, the, coming out of the last month's hearing, it was planned to just have a vote on either someone making a motion for the same, same one that was made last month. If that fails, then a new motion would have to be made. And at that point in time, it was, it was not going to be a reopening of, of the public hearing, but, and that was a couple of days after I had, after the meeting last month, I had reached out to the applicant to let him know. Since then, he hired an attorney to put together a more thorough variance criteria packet and has asked if, if the board would consider reopening the public hearing and hearing the variance request again.
Oh, he asked for it? That's not his decision. He can ask if, he can-
I didn't say it was his decision.
No. You said he asked for a reopening.
Well, he did.
Well, that's, he can't ask for it.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm telling you what's in front of me. And the, after the, the last meeting, I sent all the board members my opinion as to how the next meeting, which is this meeting, should proceed, based on the fact that we had a failed motion and the board needs to make another motion and make, keep making motions until one of them prevails. And if that meant having to continue the deliberations to another meeting, then that's what it would take. But what I'm, what I'm telling you is that the applicant and his attorney, they are making the request to, to reopen the public hearing for the variance request to allow for the ADU to be detached from their home. And you'll see in your packet from Bernstein Schur, there's a cover letter with several pages of answers to each of the five criteria. So it's up to the board to decide how they want to proceed, if they just want to simply entertain a, a motion until a motion prevails and keep it at that. And depending on that outcome, you would have to make a decision on the special exception. Or the board can decide to reopen the public hearing for the variance request, and again, depending on that outcome, would make a determination as to what you do with a special exception request.
To the other board members, we've already heard the case. I will not sit here and hear it again.
That's up to the board. I have no-
Because I see no reason. The statute says, it's about 10 words.
Which one is it, Alan?
It's not the statute. It's quoted by somewhere. Let me just find it in my folder here. Here it is. "A concurring vote," that's a vote in agreement with the motion, doesn't have anything to do with, "of any three members of the board will be necessary to take any action on any which matter on which it is required to pass."
Right.
Now, that, what that indicates is this, that if I ask for a variance, whatever I ask for, the current votes, those in agreement, there has to be at least three of us that are required to make that motion pass or to grant a variance or a special exception.
Uh huh.
And I've asked Nancy to get the town attorney to give us an opinion before we do any further with this.
And our, the motion that was made did not pass, therefore, it failed.
No, but that doesn't say failed.
I understand that. But the applicant deserves a pass-
Oh, no, no, that's your opinion.
The applicant has to have one, one, has to come away with a decision. And this particular motion failed.
That's not what the ordinance says. That's why-
You're talking about the statute, Alan, or you're talking about the statute?
The statute says, you worded it exactly the same, and so did the-
Which statute is it?
So did the guide from the Planning Commission worded it exactly the same.
May I speak?
Yes.
So I can recall, when I first got on this board, something very similar happened. And it, the motion failed to pass, and we, they came back the next month. Exactly what's going on today.
Because-
It was way back.
We, we have to have a motion that passes.
You don't have to have a motion to pass.
And I believe the attorneys were brought in on that.
Yes.
674-33, Roman numeral three. It's on page 425 of your new statutes. And it reads, "The concurring vote of any three members of the board shall be necessary to take any action on any matter on which it is required to pass."
That's correct. The concurring vote means in agreement with the application submitted. And that did not happen.
No, that's-
674-33, Roman numeral three?
Yes.
H425.
674-33?
674-30. Okay, let me go back. Go back. I was on 33-A. 673. One, two. to take any action. We didn't-
To pass.
To take any action. So if the motion is to-
Does the sentence end with action? Or does it say to pass at the end?
To take any action on any matter on which it is required to pass.
That's it? The concurring vote on the application, that's what they asked for?
It's a concurring vote on, on the motion. So the motion, if, if there's a motion by the board to, to grant a request, then you need to have a concurring vote of three members to pass that, to pass that motion. If the, if the motion is to deny, then you need-
The motion is not mentioned in that sentence.
What else do we vote on? I mean, mostly, it's motions.
There could be other, other types of business, presumably, that maybe, I don't know if they, I don't know. Who knows what the legislature was thinking when they, you know?
Well, this has been on the books for-
Oh, I know.
As long as I can remember.
Yeah.
Denise?
In the same fashion. It hasn't been reworded.
But every, every attorney that I've listened to, every court case that I've read, any, any information that I've ever read about this particular language, it's, if, if the board makes a motion to deny, you need the concurring vote of three members in order for that motion to pass.
That's correct.
If the board makes a motion to grant, you need the concurring vote of three members in order for that motion to pass.
Then you have to wait for the rest of the board members to be available for a vote.
That's, that's, or for some odd reason, there could be a situation where someone, for whatever reason, decides to change, change how they voted the first time. In theory, that could happen, usually, almost never. But, so, the last time, we had a failed, a failed motion because there was a, a motion made, and it was only two votes in favor of that motion and, and three against that motion. So the motion that was made was to grant, and there was only two votes to grant.
Okay.
So that was a failed motion. So someone, someone needs to either, well, someone would need to either make that same motion again, and someone, someone flocks their, their original vote and, and decides to cast a different vote. And, or what would more likely happen is someone would have to make an opposing motion, and then presumably, that would pass three to two.
But, did you ever read the declaratory sentence on page three of that guideline that you're referring to?
I'm sure I did.
And what does it say?
My memory's not that good.
"In heavy-balled letters, consult the town attorney if you have a question."
Right, Denise?
So what could have happened, and probably should have happened, is the people who voted opposing it should have made a motion to fail. And then it would have been-
To deny.
To deny. And then it would have been a 3-2 vote, and it would have-
That would have been the end of it.
It would have passed as a deny. And this has happened in another situation that there was a little technical glitch.
Yeah.
And, because I clearly remember, because when they came back, we opened the hearing again. And I was not in favor, but we did. So we have set precedent of opening up the hearings again.
No, no. We don't set precedent.
This isn't a piece of land.
Every case is unique and different. Don't ever say we set precedent.
Okay, listen.
That's a dangerous-
Okay. Now, I know this is 2015. I don't have the current one, but I'm going to jump, make an assumption here, maybe I shouldn't, but that it's going to be very much the same in the most current-
Is this what you're looking at?
The Board of Adjustment in New Hampshire?
I have it on my desktop.
Okay.
The most recent.
And this is all regarding RSA 674-33, the powers of the zoning board of adjustment. And under Section 3, or, you know, Roman numeral three, the one that you just read, "The concurring vote of three members of the board shall be necessary to reverse, to reverse any action of the administrative official or to decide in favor of the applicant on any matter on which it is required to pass." So that it goes through about determining the facts. And what it says, caution however, let's see, is this one? "In other words, if a, if the motion fails, members have the ability to make a different motion to then act upon. Failure of a motion does not mean that the opposite prevails." And that's kind of what we walked away with last time. The opposite does not prevail. And the board should make every effort, effort to propose a motion that a majority of board members can agree on. We didn't do that. In other words, if a motion to grant a variance fails by two in favor and three opposed margin, that does not mean that the variance is automatically disapproved. In this case, one of the three members who disapproved the motion should now propose their own new motion to disapprove the application stating the reasons for denial. The board should then vote on that motion, which would likely pass three to two. This is especially important when there are fewer than five board members present, since motions could result in a tie. Alternate motions should be put forward, but if the board truly cannot find something at least three members can agree on, the meeting should be continued until another member can be present.
If you want to, you need to make sure that that book gets in every member of this board's hands.
Everyone has it.
I don't have it.
Everyone has it electronically. It, it-
Hard and fast. The only way I, is I read for a living.
Okay, well, we, yes, have been told to limit the number of hard copies. It's 155 pages long.
Well, I know how long it is.
I got mine through one of the conferences that we attended. I just, I paid for it myself. But, of course, we don't have conferences these days.
No.
But yes, they are-
Yeah, I, I recently re emailed it, the whole, the whole book, and, and then sent, I think it was shortly after the last month's meeting, sent, sent the, I don't know if it was the whole, the whole book, but it was at least a section on 674-333 with that section on, on the, the votes highlighted.
Nancy, could you just-
But I will, I will-
That planning guide, you sent it to me.
Yes. I will print it out and have it for you.
It's hard to find anything in it.
Oh, you read voraciously.
Yeah, I know. But 155 pages for one, one sentence is a little difficult.
Can I just resend that to the members, please, or to me, just when you have a chance?
Sure.
Thank you.
So we are going to go forward with this application of Jason and Aspasia Cody, applicants' owners.
Excuse me?
What?
You don't have any motion to open the hearing?
Do I need a motion to open the hearing, Nancy?
Yes, you do.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion to reopen the hearing.
Reopen the public hearing.
And I'll second that. And, let's see, Denise, yeah. Open. And vote, roll call vote?
No.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and we're going to have an alternate, an alternate, that, that motion failed. Allen voting against, and Denise and Gail in favor, because we want to remember the roll call votes, even though we're all here, because people are online.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So we are going to have an alternate motion, or I'm going to open the floor for an alternate motion. Is there an alternate motion?
I'll make a motion to extend to the next meeting when there's more people on the board.
I'll second that.
So a motion to continue-
Continue to next month.
Until September? And we are continuing the deliberations since we didn't, you didn't get a vote to reopen the public hearing, correct?
Correct.
So continue, because what's, what's on the table right now is the deliberations. So next month-
We'd have to-
You can't, you can't, you can't, I, I just want to clarify, because you're not continuing the public hearing because you didn't get a vote to reopen the public hearing. So I just want to make sure that I worded it correctly and the notice of decision that we're really continuing the deliberations, since that's what was on the table today.
So I have a question for you. So if we motion, let's just say, next month, to reopen the public hearing, the public now has not been notified.
Right, and we would have to send out notices, which is what we did this time-
I just wanted to make sure that was.
So the town would, would pay to resend notices for, for whatever date we have a public hearing on. I'm not sure. We sent out note, the town sent out paid-for notices in the-
For this meeting.
Yes, in, for this meeting, in the event that there would be a public hearing. So we would just do the same thing next month. So if the board does opt to, you know, vote passes next month to hold the public hearing, notification would have already been made because the town would have already sent out notices to abutters just in case, which is what we did for tonight.
So, so anybody who has the availability to be here or watch knows that it's, could potentially be extended to next month.
Could potentially, but even-
And we may open it up.
But they'll need confirmation.
They'll be notified by mail.
Okay.
Anyways, so.
That would give you plenty of time to get an opinion from town attorney.
Absolutely.
Please.
Yes.
I mean, I've been on these boards too long to fall for this change where we have to have, if we don't get a concurring vote, that's the end of it.
But it's not a change. It's something we've, we've done.
Listen, I've been Chair of this board.
I know.
Okay.
Suffice to say, I will, I will ask the town administrator to contact the town attorney.
Okay.
Something in writing from him. So we're making a motion to continue the deliberations.
Okay, and we're going to take a roll call vote?
Well, hear me out. So what kind of motion do you, does it take? So, what kind of motion do you, does it take?
What?
It takes three.
Yeah.
But all we're doing is putting aside what we should have been doing.
Oh, I know.
That we should have done last month.
So, the question would be, we, we can't take a vote, because two members have voted before, are not present, so somehow we need to assure that the five-member Board is here.
I, I don't think I agree with that, I think that four, because then you have the three one way or the other. I know what you're saying, it could be a tie, but we don't know, I've seen things change. So, you're saying we wait till we have a five? I don't think that's up to us to make that decision.
Well, in any, in any case, the Board has to make some decision tonight, either make a decision on the application, or make a decision to continue it to the next month, because something has to, there has to be a motion, that motion has to pass, whatever it is, the Board needs to take some kind of action, so, otherwise, we may as well just sit here in this room until next month.
Okay, so now we're gonna define what's in the motion.
That's up to the Board.
Well, okay, so I made the motion, so I'm gonna, I make a motion to, um, continue the deliberation of this meeting till the, till October, what's the date?
I don't know what it is.
Oh, oh, which
Till the October meeting.
Right, but to do what? To reaffirm the vote on that application.
That the next meeting, a decision's gonna be made on that.
How about add for, just just to toss an idea out there on top of that motion, with, um, possible reopening of the public hearing, that way when
If the Board feels necess, feels it's necessary, or the Board wishes to.
With a, yeah, I don't know.
With a positive vote.
But it's like a rehearing, if it was a rehearing, this has to be presented to the Board for their consideration, information that we did not consider at the original hearing.
And there may be
Okay, okay, here's my motion, ready? Let's see if this works. I motion to, um, continue this meeting to the October meeting.
Continue deliberations.
Deliberation, continue deliberation to the October meeting. If the applicant has new information, on this, on this special exception, the Board
Variance.
Variance, I'm sorry, I'm confused, uh, variance, the Board may vote to open the public hearing. Alan, does that fit what you want?
I think it has to be defined, that the reason that we're, that we're in this little pickle, is if it comes back from the Town Attorney, they're saying that we need a affirmative vote into, to deny it, that that's the only reason we're gonna meet on this case, again.
Okay, you can add that to my motion.
We're just going to, we're going to resume deliberations.
No, we've already, we've already been through deliberations, we're gonna vote on a motion to deny.
The motion to deny, the motions are part of the deliberations, so I think the Board needs to be able to discuss the details, especially two, two months after the fact, before they jump in and vote.
Okay.
So
I don't know that.
That's good.
So, and then if, and we'll just take it from there.
And if the, the Town Attorney disagrees on the opinion that a vote of three against is not binding, or it, it was binding, then we'll have to revisit.
No, three to two vote, but we're looking to have him ask, answer, is that the end of this discussion, with the two for, three against, no further discussion, that's the end of it. Now, the applicant can apply for a rehearing, or he can change his information, and change his application and reapply, and that can be done. Those are his options.
Well, I'm not an attorney, I don't wanna presume that.
I think my, my own personal opinion on that is that, um, if it had been a normal hearing last month, or normal deliberation and a, a normal vote that resulted in a motion that passed, that would be the case, but that didn't happen, and I think in fairness to the applicant, and actually, um, in the best interest of the town, my opinion, is to even open the rehear, open the hearing, the public hearing again as well, and maybe it, it appears somewhat like a rehearing, but it gives them a chance to be able to present things again, so that we can hear them, we can deliberate and come up with a motion, hopefully all five of us are here, and we can come up with a motion that is at least three to two, one way or the other. That's, that's my preference, because, because, otherwise, we still would end up with a rehearing another month down the road.
Mm-hmm.
There's nothing wrong with showing a little kindness and a little bit of grace.
Oh, I know.
Um, I think in the long run, it could save the Town Attorney fees if they were to appeal, and I just think it's the right thing to do.
I'm not denying any of that.
We made a mistake, we have to own that.
We made a mistake, we own it, and we correct it, and I think that's the best way to correct it.
So, meeting next month to revote, if you wanna call it, revote for or against, and depending upon whether the motion to grant fails, to make another motion for some other result, so that we get three, four, and two against, basically.
So, we're not opening the hearing for new information?
Nope, don't need it. I don't think, I've read, but the Attorney sent it, same, basically the same thing.
Well, isn't that opening a hearing, you're lis, you're taking in new information, but you're not letting
Well, that was sent to me, I have, I have a right to read anything that's sent to me. So.
I feel that if we have the right, let's, let's look at it a different angle, I'm looking at it completely differently.
Okay.
But if they have a right to bring, introduce information in that we've read on our own time, then if they happen to have an objectional abutter, that abutter would have the right to hear that, so it kinda goes both ways.
And it should be
They had an opportunity to do that, and they didn't, so I don't think there's any abutter issues here.
But it's, it's
And if it's information that we're considering, eh, or, and especially you are considering in your decision tonight, you're considering what the Attorney sent to you, it's information that should be not just in the file, but it should be on the record, so that it's in the minutes, and it's not on the record and in the minutes unless we discuss it.
And one way you can discuss it is have a new hearing.
Right.
We can open up the hearing, because they're gonna, the abutters are gonna be notified.
No, no matter what you do, there's gonna be differing opinions.
That may be. But with, with new information, new ways of presenting things, sometimes attorneys can make things more clear than an applicant can, because they've got more experience, th- the votes may end up changing, we don't know, they may re, they may stay, stay the same, we don't know. We just don't know.
That's right.
But I think it's fair to open up the public hearing, so that they have a chance to have a fair deliberation and a fair vote, one way or the other, a fair decision.
Well, I think there's a motion on the floor.
Yes, there is.
Would you care to get back to that motion you made, Denise? Can you remember what it was?
I motion to continue this, this variance, or let me read
Liberations?
Deliberations, to the October meeting.
October sixth.
October sixth meeting. Contingent upon the Attorney saying, stating that a three, a negative vote of three, it does not consider a closed hearing.
See, that's a, see, that's where the concurring, the word concurring comes in, so be careful.
But that's, and the Board, if they wish to open the hearing due to new information, so it's right into the minutes, can vote on that.
So, the portion of your motion about the Attorney's opinion, um, is it restricted to just that vote of three to two, and, and that it wasn't reversed?
That is correct.
That the vote reversed?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that's understood.
Yes, yes.
The answer to the question is, does the Town Attorney think that we have to have a second vote?
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I am too.
Cause I know what the answer's gonna be.
All right, okay, so did you like that motion? Please don't make me repeat it.
Yeah, you better give it to me the next time we sit, we have to sit down in a meeting, I know that.
Can you read it back, Nancy?
No, no, here's what I say, that I, that I will second that motion.
Sorry.
Call it, come on, let's go.
Okay, roll call vote. Roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And Gail, yes. Motion carries. We will meet back here next month.
Let's hope we have a full meeting.
Try to do this again, hopefully we have a five-member Board.
With full opinions.
And with the opinions of our, the opinion of the Attorney regarding last month's vote, and, um, we'll go from there.
Thank you, folks.
Sorry that you came out for Hopefully next month is a
Please, this is why we need alternates.
Yes.
I can't help you till after this is over, so.
Make it quick.
Okay, um, one thing we forgot before I jumped into this application was the minutes, um, but I do wanna make note that the minutes in our package were for the month of July, instead of the month of August.
Same here.
So, we're going to table the minutes?
So, I would table the minutes.
We just did that to make sure everyone was paying attention.
We were on top of things, yeah.
We'll, we'll table them, one, there is a correction of those minutes, but I'll bring those up next month.
Okay.
Um, it was something that the Planning Director had passed on to me, and I will bring that up at the, the next meeting, so we are going to table those. All right, we are on to the next application, let me move some of these things out of the way, so I can move, save your Cody applications for next month, please. All right, our next application is Michael Umenhofer?
I think it's
Umenhofer.
Umenhofer, okay, Michael Umenhofer, applicant owner seeking a variance to add a deck to the existing home approximately six feet from the side property lines, whereas twenty-five feet is required, and it concerns Section 4.3 of the Table of Dimensional Regulations of the Gothstown Zoning Ordinance. The property is located at 558 Blackbrook Road, MAP 11 Lot 22-7, zoned agricultural, and before we begin, I will entertain a motion regarding, uh, regional impact, please.
Make a motion, no regional impact.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I say yes, so we have no regional impact, and we will go on to the application, um, do we have a representative or an applicant here for this?
Mike, can you hear me?
Eric, is it there?
Yes. Okay, oh, yeah, um, yeah, Mike Umenhofer?
Okay.
Yes, Eric, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna re-mute you, if you're not already.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, uh, can I call you Michael instead of massacring your last name?
Mike, did you hear that?
Um, I can, it's really
Barely?
Broken up.
Okay.
Barely hear you, I can hear you clearly on the TV, but there's like a five-second gap.
There, yeah, there is, there is, it's, uh, yeah, when you have your TV on, it's a little bit weird.
Okay, can I call you Michael instead of by your last name?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, I, I don't wanna massacre it, and you wanna tell us about your application and what you're looking to do, please?
You can hear your voice in the control room.
So, our house is built on, pretty, pretty much on a hill, and was right on the corner of the property, and so we are really interested in building a small deck, about fourteen feet by sixteen feet, um, on the side property, so it's a little close to the property line, um, but we have trees in between us and our neighbor, um, and so we just wanna be able to build a deck.
Okay, is, let's see.
You have a copy of your application there with you, Michael?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, does the Board have any questions of the applicant? Alan?
Yes, does that, does that easement, or whatever, to your abutter that allows that driveway for you folks, did that contain anything about the fact that you had, that became a
Yes.
A property line, or what?
Yes, it's an easement, and it's, um, right next to the property line, we actually didn't know that our driveway was an easement until after we had purchased the property, uh, first time home buyer on Lot 29, we've had this property for about, almost five years now.
Okay, um, is there any way that you can build a patio than, rather than a deck? Because a patio doesn't require a variance and/or, um, so it's not a structure.
Um, the, the problem is, is that because it's on a hill, like, it's like directly on a hill, that, that we'd have to build it up quite a bit, um, and that would take a lot more work, I think, and it's not as nice as what we'd like, um, and it would hold, it would hold the ground in better, and prevent from erosion too, so the deck would, um, hold up a lot better than the patio, cause we already have some erosion with the patio that is currently there.
Okay, so, your options are limited because of the slope and topography of the property, which I noticed when I was out there. Okay.
Okay.
So, he has some restraining factors when it comes to the topography on that site.
Yeah.
Okay, Denise, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, um, Michael, do you have, you have your application in front of you?
I would make a motion to forego reading into the record those, his application.
The criteria needs, the criteria should be on the record. Can you review your requ, the, the, your responses to the variance criteria, those questions that you had to answer? You know, the one through five, not contrary to the public interest, spirit of the ordinance is observed, et cetera, would you read those into the record, or would you prefer I do that?
Gotta wait for the delay.
Um, do you mind reading it, just because of the fact that there's a delay, I can barely hear you through the phone?
Oh, that's fine, I'll do that. Okay, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, as the basic zoning objectives can still be met, as there will be plenty of space between the deck and the neighbor's lawn and home. This deck would be built for personal use, it would have little impact packed on public interest in nearby parcels of land, it would also increase the property value at 558 Blackbrook Road, and the property values in the surrounding community, there would be no harm to the public, and there would be no adverse effects on the public interest. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the sixteen-foot-long by fourteen-foot-wide deck would be built to code and would follow safety regulations, and would be built legally with a permit. The deck would be six feet from the nearest abutting property line, the edge of the deck would be located one hundred and eighty-five point five feet from the eight, the abutting neighbor's home, the deck would have no adverse effects on health, safety, and the general welfare of the community. Excuse me, granting the variance would do substantial justice, because it would allow us the ability to use more of our land, as stated prior, our house was built on a hill and has a limited amount of usable space. The front of our home is near the road, and the back of the house is on a hill, therefore the most reasonable place to put a deck is on the side of our home, where the side door is. Considering these circumstances, along with the fact that our closest abutting neighbor's home is located one hundred and eighty-five point five feet away from the proposed deck, we believe this is a reasonable request. Also, the closest abutting neighbor's property line has a barrier of thick wooded trees, which separates which separates the areas nicely and would not be impacted. The values of surrounding properties will not be diminished because the deck will not only increase the amount of usable space at 558 Blackbrook Road, but it will also increase the property value of our home and other properties in the surrounding area. And regarding hardship, he said, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessarily hardship because our home was built very close to the corner of our lot. This makes it very difficult to meet the 25-foot requirement for building a deck. Our home is also built on a hill, which gives us very limited amount of usable space. The front side of our home is near the road, and the back of the house is on a hill. Therefore, the most reasonable place to put a deck is on the side of our home where the door is. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because the purpose of the 25-foot ordinance is to prevent overcrowding. Since our closest abutting neighbor's home is located 185.5 feet away from the edge of the proposed deck with a barrier of thick wooded trees lining their parcel of land, there's no risk of overcrowding. The proposed use is reasonable because, considering our home was built very close to the corner of our lot and on a hill, our property has a limited amount of usable space, and our closest abutting neighbor's home is 185.5 feet away from the proposed deck with a barrier of thick wooded trees lining their parcel of land, and we believe this is a reasonable request. And then, if, if the criteria in sub-paragraph A aren't established, unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from others in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. A variance is essential to avoid an unnecessary hardship and would enable reasonable use of our parcel of land. Unlike most homes, our home was built very close to the corner of our lot. This makes it difficult to meet the 25-feet requirement due for building a deck. There's also very limited space next to our house to build a deck as our home is built on a hill. The front side of our home is near the road, and the back of the house is on a hill. Therefore, the most reasonable place to put a deck is on the side of our home where the side door is. Considering these circumstances, along with the fact that our closest abutting neighbor's home is 185.5 feet away from the proposed deck, and our closest abutting neighbor's parcel line has a barrier of thick wooded trees, we believe this is a reasonable request. Other issues, we appreciate the need for zoning ordinance, zoning codes to, in order to protect the community as a whole. We also realize variances are often necessary, as not all ordinances take into account the variables of each property. We hope you'll grant our variance considering our unique circumstances. Okay, does the board have any other questions? Alan?
I have one. Well-written responses.
Yes, very much. I was thinking that as I was reading it, it's like, wow.
The one thing that his, his little plot plan doesn't show is the easement that's on there. So, when you think about the easement that goes with his property here, he's really not that close to what I call a buildable line, meaning...
If you take the easement into consideration?
Yeah. So, I, I can understand his predicament here in that particular lot.
Yeah, it's definitely got the hardship going on that one, being that it's a hill.
Mike?
Yes.
How thick is that barrier of wooded trees on your neighbor's parcel?
Oh, God, you can't even see the house.
Um, it's, it's thick enough that during the spring days, you can't, you can't see very much through, but during the fall, you can kind of see a little bit through it. So, it's like, I don't know, what'd you say, probably 25 feet of woods, but they're thinner trees.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else that you want to add to your comments before the board deliberates?
Um, no, I don't think so, I just, I just think that because of the fact that we didn't know about the easement and how close our property line is, that a variance would be really helpful for us to be, increase the usable space on our lot, and it would just make it look really nice and take advantage of the fact that there's a hill there a little bit better. Our neighbor next to us, he actually had to build up quite a lot of his, his, his lot, and so, he actually had to get an easement as well too, I mean, a variance as well too, when he built this deck. Brian Tremblay, who owned Broken Wrench in Gothstown.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, the board's going to open this application to the public for comment? Is there anybody online that wants to comment about this?
No, we have two members of the public, I recognize one as an abutter, two, the Larch...
Side Street?
Second, the Larch Street, you get 61, yeah, Foley and Dion. And then, we have a, there's a Manchester phone number, 2487? If they would like to identify themselves?
That might be my number, I'm calling from the Hooks and Police Department, I'm an officer there.
Oh, well, you're showing up twice then.
Oh, well, Erica's probably on the other line at home.
Oh, okay, because I have a Hooks and Police number, it's 1560.
Oh, yeah, that's me.
Okay, but you're not 2487?
Nope.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello, who is this?
Um, this is Burden's, Kristen Foley Burden, we're at 56 Fairview, and that's probably my work number, 656-2487.
Uh, six, yes, yeah, should I drop that call? Or is that, because I see a Chris, Chris Burden?
No, I'm, I'm here, I'm actually calling in on my work phone.
Okay, okay, well, hang, hang tight, we're not at that application yet. But thanks, thanks for identifying that phone number for me.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, having no comment, we're going to close the public hearing, and I will entertain discussion or a motion.
Under the circumstances, I motion to grant the variance to add a deck to the existing home approximately six feet from the side property line, whereas 25 feet is required.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Alan. And we will do a roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And Gail, yes, motion carries, three to zero. You have your variance, Michael.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you guys so much, really appreciate that.
Have a good night.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have, wait a minute, oh, yes, here we go. Peter and Michelle Simino, owners and Andrew Volkman applicant, are seeking a special exception to build a 785 gross square-foot accessory dwelling unit onto the rear of an existing single-family home, pending approval by the planning board of a lot-line adjustment. This concerns Section 5.2 of the Gothstown zoning ordinance. The property is located at 4 Morrow Street, MAP 17, Lot 57, Zoned Residential 2. And before we get into it, I will entertain a motion regarding regional impact, please.
Motion, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'll make a motion, there's no regional impact.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And Gail, yes, motion carries. All right, do we have somebody to speak for the applicant? Oh, you're standing up, you're here. And you, come have a seat at this table here.
My name is Andrew Volkman, I'm the builder, I'm here representing Peter and Michelle Simino.
Okay. Was it your dad that was at the planning board meetings?
Yes, it was.
Okay. What do you have to tell us about the application?
Um, so, we're proposing a 785-square-foot accessory dwelling unit to the rear of the existing single-family home. In preparation for this, the lot has been surveyed and adjusted by Fieldstone Land Consultants, and the planning board granted a conditional approval at the August 13th meeting. We chose to seek the approval of the lot-line adjustment since the proposed structure would have exceeded the original property boundary. By moving the lot-line, we're now able to meet the current setback requirements as well. The ADU will be built behind the house and garage, which means it will be barely noticeable from the street. All the exterior materials, the siding, trim, windows, will be in a similar kind to the existing home. There'll be no front-facing doors. The primary entrance will be through the garage, and there will also be another connecting hallway in the garage for access between the ADU and the home. The, there will be an additional door to the side yard, and also an additional door to a patio, but those are both side-facing, not front-facing as well. The future occupants will be using the garage as their primary parking space, but there's also sufficient parking in the existing driveways, there's no need for any additional. I think the other main thing is the lot's currently on town sewer, so the septic requirements are not required.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Alan?
Well, I noticed from this plot plan, which is, I'm glad that we have this, I noticed that the actual house, was it granted a variance to build in the front yard?
It was, and I, I think I included that in my report, but my recollection is that...
Okay.
It did receive, yeah, planning board approvals and zoning board approvals, one in 2007, one in 1990. One of them, they never exercised, I think it was a different owner at that time.
Okay.
The 2007 was a proposed ADU as well, and they just never followed through with building at that time.
Yeah, that was the one, yeah. And, yes, the, the, when the new house was built, it was 1990 that the board granted a variance to prior owner to allow construction of the new home with attached garage approximately eight feet from the side property boundary, which is the northeast corner of the attached garage, whereas 15 feet was required. And then, plot plan produced by licensed land surveyor Joseph Wickert in 2007 for the August 7th, 2007 variance, that was the one that was never exercised, shows that the attached garage was actually constructed 6.6 feet from the side property boundary. And then, the conditionally proved lot-line adjustment is going to take care of that encroachment.
Okay, so they did a little land swap here, probably.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Just want to note that, that the applicant is on the line. Michelle, Michelle Simino.
Michelle Simino's on the line, okay. Any other questions, Alan?
I'm, I'm good.
Denise?
I'm also.
Okay. You want to review your variance criteria in your application, or do you want me to read them?
I don't have it word for word as you do.
Do you want me to read it?
Good.
Okay, no problem. It's just a formality to get it on the record. Okay, special exception criteria. Specific site is appropriate location for such use, being consistent with the town's current master plan, because we're able to meet all dimensional regulations and supplemental standards for an accessory dwelling unit. The size or frequency of the use will not significantly alter the character of the neighborhood because the proposed structure will be located behind the existing home, so there will be minimal visual change to the neighborhood. The use will not create a nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians in a manner that cannot be ameliorated, because frequency of usage will not create any negative impact, as the accessory dwelling unit will only introduce one additional vehicle. The proposed location is of sufficient size to allow for adequate and appropriate facilities for the proper operation of the use, because we have the necessary parking allotted for the ADU. The proposed location is of sufficient size to allow for appropriate buffers of this use to adjacent properties, because we're not exceeding setback requirements, and all minimum lot sizes are met. Other issues and matters, the ADU will give the future occupants the means to leave an assisted, to leave an assisted living facility. Does the board have any other questions?
No.
No.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I'm going to open this application to the public, is there anybody online that would like to make some comments?
Yes, sorry, I was on mute.
That's okay. Can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Okay. If your, if your TV is on, if you could just turn the volume down, because otherwise, there's a, there's about a 10-second delay, and you won't, you won't have an immediate communication with us here. So, I'll, I'll try to turn up the volume of our phone, I'm not sure if that's going to help or not, but let us know if you can hear us.
I, I'm in another room, so I'm hoping that helps.
Okay, you sound loud and clear at this end. Did you, did you have anything to add?
Um, no, actually, I think Andrew has taken care of it for us. Well, I should say, we actually hope that this is approved, because we, it's for my in-laws that really can't live alone anymore, so I guess that's really all I have to say. Pete, you have anything to add?
I'll take that as a no?
Hmm.
Okay. There's, is there anybody else on the line, Nancy?
Uh, no, no, not for this application.
Okay, well, with that, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and the board will discuss and/or vote.
This is a perfect application for an ADU, in my eyes. So, I will motion to approve, excuse me, let me pull this out. With this variant, special exception to build a 785 gross square-foot accessory dwelling onto the rear of the existing single-family home, pending the final approval from the planning board for a lot-line adjustment.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Gail, yes, motion carries. You have your special exception.
Thank you very much.
It is conditioned upon the approval of the planning board for that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, did you get that okay?
She's celebrating.
I did, thank you so much.
Okay, you're very welcome, have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next application is Eric Foley and Erica Dion, applicant owners seeking to add a deck to the existing home approximately nine feet from the rear property line, whereas 30 feet is required. This concerns Section 4.3 of the Table of Dimensional Regulations of the Gothstown zoning ordinance. The property is located at 61 Larch Street, MAP 16, Lot 163, Zoned R2. And before we get started, I will entertain a motion regarding regional impact, please.
The motion is no regional impact.
Second.
Roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And Gail, yes, motion carries, no regional impact. All right, do we have an, somebody to speak for this application, Eric Foley or Erica Dion?
Yeah, I'm here, I can't really hear you too good, this is Eric.
Okay, hi, Eric.
There we go, it's a little bit better.
Okay. Did, no, go ahead, oh. Uh, do you have a copy of your application with you, Eric?
I believe I do, I took a, I scanned it, I'm at work right now.
Okay.
Any other questions, pop up, Erica can hear it.
I do have it, but if you guys would, would read it, that's fine, just because it's so hard for us to hear, and there's a delay.
Okay. Yeah, um, do you have your television on, Erica? I know you, I know you don't, Eric. Erica, do you have your television on?
It's on mute.
Okay, okay.
Okay, well, what do you have to tell us about your application? What is it you're looking for?
We're just looking to get the 12-by-12 deck on the back side of the house, just to add outdoor space. There's not much that we can do out back, we put a patio in last year, or a couple of years ago now. But we just, we really want an extra outdoor space to just enjoy and relax at.
Currently, we don't have anywhere where we can just walk right outside larger than our front door, so we're looking to add a slider, where we have two large windows in our back, so we're hoping that we're just able to put a slider there with a deck.
Okay. Alan, do you have any questions?
Um, no. Are you aware of a note that we received from one of your butters?
Could you repeat that, I couldn't hear?
Are you aware of a note you received from one of your butters? That was the note that I emailed to you, I think on Friday?
Yep, we got that email from Nancy. I was unaware that he had an issue with the bracket mounts that were on the wall. They were there when we moved in. But I'd already taken them down regarding the fence. That is, I put a fence in last year to separate the yards, because we just had a chicken wire, so we just upped the, made it look a little bit better, and we went straight to his shed, and I don't see us going any further. Blocking his shed, as that acts as a barrier on its own, and that has nothing to do with the 12-by-12 deck, as the closest point from the deck to his shed will be nine feet. And as you get further away, it gets even further away from his shed.
I'd also like to comment on that, reading the note that they sent in, that we were not aware of any damage that was inside their shed, and apologize for that. We were not aware of that, nor, so that was never communicated to us, and we just apologize for that. And we have since taken down brackets, and the kayak's haven't been moved, so those pictures, if you would like updated pictures, we do have pictures with the kayak's move, that are no longer along the shed.
Okay. Denise?
Can you describe where your patio is off the house?
Can you show me?
Describe where, you said you put a patio. Could you describe where?
So we have a little side door on the side of the house, and it's just right off of that.
Okay.
But we want to be able to grill out on the deck, and just easy access in and out of the house right there. Because the kitchen's right beside it.
Yeah, they're putting a slider door in those two windows that are in the family room or whatever room that's in the center of the house.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
If there was a question asked, I wasn't able to hear it.
No, he was just commenting about the slider that you want to put in place of those two windows?
Slider where the windows are?
Yeah.
Yep.
Because the parking is on the opposite end of the house.
I can't hear.
On the uphill side.
Okay.
We cannot hear anything.
Hold on just a minute.
A little closer, please.
Use your breathing voice.
Thank you.
And if it's too close, then Dara will yell at you.
Come on, yell, yell at me.
Yell at me.
Can you hear us now?
Barely. I can hear you, I can't hear anybody else at all, you're very faint.
We'll try to project our voice a little bit more.
It's a shy bunch, so.
There you go.
Yeah, right.
Okay, Peter or Michelle, do you have anything else that you want to add to your?
Eric or Erica?
Uh, what am I looking, oh, I'm looking at the above, yes. Eric and Erica, I'm sorry. Is there anything else you want to?
I just wanted to add that there's, just the shape of the property itself isn't a solid rectangle or square like most in the area. So we kind of have the weird shape to deal with. Everybody pretty much surrounding us also has decks off their house. I know in front of us, two beside us do. Somebody across the street up, I think it's 65 or 66, just had a front deck put on. So it's, it's not like we're going to be changing the structure of the house or anything. We're just adding the 12-by-12 small deck off the back, and plenty of space in between both properties.
Go ahead.
Eric, are there going to be stairs off this deck? And if so, in what direction?
What was that?
Are there going to be stairs coming off the deck?
Yes, there's going to be the set of stairs that come off, but they're going to be, so in the backyard, it'll be about, it'll be on the right side of the deck.
Okay, thank you.
If you exit out of the house, it's not like they're going to go down towards property line, they're going to be within, they're going to be closer to the house than anything else.
Okay.
I would also like to just comment, there also is a large tree within our backyard that will, is also close to the property line, that also separates, you know, privacy from our butters that live behind us, as well as their sheds. That provides privacy for them as well.
Okay. Do you have your application with you? To be able to read your variance answers from the application? Or I can read it for you if you'd prefer?
If you don't mind reading it, I really can't hear. All I heard was read something off the application.
I'm sorry. I'll, I will read it. You said that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because it will be within property lines and lot with space from all property lines. The spirit of the ordinance is observed, because all the properties are similar in the neighborhood, and it's to enhance the structure and be consistent with other properties in the neighborhood. Granting the variance would do substantial justice, because it will provide an access to the outdoors. The deck will be, values of surrounding properties will not be diminished, because the deck will be within property lines and distance from all surrounding properties. And regarding hardship, you said it will be built behind the house with property lines. And that the proposed use is reasonable, because currently, there's no easy accessible area within this home providing access to the outdoors through a doorway larger than a front door. And criteria B, if A is not established for hardship, you said that neighbors shed a butts property line. Most houses have decks surrounding me. It will be a deck with no walls blocking the view of surrounding areas. The property is not rectangular, which causes the property line to be closer than others in the neighborhood. Is there anything you want to add to all of that?
What was the question?
Is there anything you want to add to what I read from your application regarding your variance request and the criteria?
Um, no, I'm all set.
Okay. Okay, does, does the board have any questions? Alan?
No.
Denise?
No.
And I don't either. Is there any, let's, I guess, we'll close, open the hearing to the public. Is there anybody online that wants to comment on this application?
Could, the person with the number 2487, can you identify yourself, please?
Hello, I'm sorry, what was that?
Hi, the number 2487, last four digits. Just looking for that person to identify themselves.
We're the Burdens.
The Burdens, okay, thank you. Do you have any, any comments, questions, opposition, in favor, or just simply making comments for this application?
Other than the concerns that we voiced in our letter, I guess I, I'm confused at one point. Are they saying that our shed is the property line? Because that's not, not our understanding.
No, I have no idea. The property line is that line behind our two sheds.
Just a quick question. This is Alan Yaten of the board. What do you use the big building for?
What was that?
What do you use the largest structure that's directly behind the house? Looks like there's horseshoe pits there.
Like, we can't hear.
That's not our property. The large structure behind the house is not ours. That's going to be the Burdens' shed.
Okay, I know. What do they use it for?
It's a storage shed.
Not a Serica.
All right.
Hello, this is the Burdens.
Uh-huh.
That, that shed is used for storage.
Okay.
I don't think it's a clubhouse for.
Okay, so that, that shed doesn't belong to the applicant?
Oh, I know that.
Okay.
I'm looking at the building next door to it in the pictometry photograph. Look at the pictometry in the application that Nancy prepared. You'll notice there's a big structure behind the house, right directly behind it.
Right.
My question was, what does it use for?
They said storage.
Those are, those are horseshoe pits, backyard, the grass.
Well, it's their property and...
No permit.
That's another matter for another day. Okay, so, we have the criteria read in, we have comments. Is there any other comments that the applicant would like to make?
I can't hear anything, can you hear us?
Sorry, yeah, you're, you're hearing fine, and I apologize at this end. I'm not sure what's going on, we fiddle with a couple of things. But do you have any, any more comments you'd like to add?
I do not, Eric, do you?
Me, I'm all set.
Okay.
Did we hear everything from the abutter? There was a lot of commotion, I just want to make sure.
We hear everything from the abutter.
Mrs. and Mr. Burden, are you all set? Or do you need to, you want to make any additional comments?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. This is Ms. Burden?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
And I guess one of the members of the board said something about a permit not being for the shed. We can discuss that later, but that is grandfathered into the deed.
That, yeah, that's not a matter for this application right now, so it's, it's nothing that we need to discuss here.
Okay. And again, we would still like a fence to divide the property, but that I guess will be up to the board.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and the board will enter deliberations. Comments, thoughts, motion, something?
I can comment about the fence. You know, I'm looking, the sheds that are very, behind our applicant on the property, they're closer to the property line, closer than the six feet. So to have him purchase and pay for a fence when he's doing less, getting closer to, you know, he's not as close to the property line. I have no problem with the sheds, that's not our business. But I don't think it's the responsibility of the applicant to pay for updating the fence, in my opinion, if we were to grant this.
Okay.
I agree with Denise. There's no way that we could require someone to put a fence in there. Absolutely no.
Okay, I would agree. Okay, is there any other discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve the variance requested by Eric Foley and Erica Dion. Applicant owners are seeking a variance to add a deck to the existing home approximately nine feet from the rear property line, whereas 30 feet is required. This concerns Section 4.3 of the Table of Dimensional Regulations of the Gulftown zoning ordinance.
Okay, we have the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
So we have the motion by Alan, Denise second. We'll take a roll call vote. Alan?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I say yes, motion carries, all in favor. You have your variance to add your deck.
Hey, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other business for tonight, Nancy?
Uh, no, we...
That's the right answer.
Do not. Sorry. Okay by me.
All right, then I guess I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
That was fast.
I know. Barely out of your mouth.
And roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Me, yes. Meeting is adjourned at 8:21. 1, 4, 3.
We won't argue about a couple of minutes.
8:21, correct.